Let us begin with a prayer as we always do. And I'm going to read from Luke, the Gospel of Luke, chapter 10. Luke, chapter 10. Sorry. Luke, chapter 10, verse 21 through 24. Luke 10, 21 through 24. We'll use that for our prayer. So we begin in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. At that very moment, Jesus rejoiced in the Holy Spirit and said, "I give you praise, Father, Lord of heaven and earth; for although you have hidden these things from the wise and the learned, you have revealed them to the childlike." Yes, Father, such has been your gracious will. All things have been handed over to me by my Father. No one knows who the Son is except the Father, and who the Father is except the Son, and anyone to whom the Son wishes to reveal him. So turning to his disciples in private, he said, "Blessed are the eyes that see what you see; for I say to you, many prophets and kings desired to see what you see, but did not see it, and to hear what you hear, but did not hear it." Oh, Lord, we are the ones who have heard your word. We thank you for opening our minds and our hearts, for giving us the desire to always continue to understand your life and the life that you have given to each and every one of us to live. We ask you, oh, Lord, to continue to do so even in this gathering. And may we understand your word and also give us the courage we need to practice the message that comes from your word. And we continue to ask you to grant eternal rest to all our departed sisters and brothers, especially for our former pastoral associate, our sister Karen Miller. And we ask this blessings through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. So sisters and brothers, we continue with our exploration of the ministry of Jesus outside of Galilee. Okay, this is very important. The ministry of Jesus outside of Galilee, because Galilee took a lion's share of the ministry of Jesus Christ. Jesus ministered largely in Galilee, and Galilee, we have said, is in the north. So everywhere else that he ministered apart from Galilee has some significance to the ministry itself. It has some meaning where Jesus preached or did something. The place itself gives us a context to understand the meaning of the ministry that Jesus was giving. So just by knowing where Jesus did something, that offers us a way to understand what he is doing and the meaning of what he is doing. Okay? So always be sure to be aware, and I'm using maps to let us picture where a particular place is. And when you hear the gospel stories, you kind of try to plant it in that particular geographical place, and you will be able to have some understanding of what this is. So I'm going to give you the map, and then I'm going to use the maps and explain what the different territories offer us as a context, the context we have to keep in mind with the different geographical places. So last session, we talked about Samaria and the Samaritans and their significance in the ministry of Jesus, how they explain the ministry of Jesus. We know very well that Samaria is that place where the Samaritans, who are foreigners, who are considered foreigners, who are considered not part of the chosen, quote unquote, chosen people. This is from the perspective of the Israelites, the Jewish communities of, they consider the Samaritans, Samaria and the Samaritans as unworthy and not part of, excluded because of the history, what happened in Samaria, which I'm going to talk about right now. But today, we are going to talk about, we're going to talk about Jesus's ministry outside of Galilee, and today, we are considering Judea. Okay? You hear that all the time, Judea, Samaria, Galilee. You hear all these places. So what is that Judea? What, where is that territory? And what does it contribute to the meaning of the gospel stories? So I want to bring you back to last week and say a few things as a background to how Judea came to be. Okay? So first of all, I told you last time that David and his son Solomon ruled a united kingdom of Israel. Okay? Israel was one, when they got to the promised land, they became one people, Israel. Okay? And that Israel was ruled by David, King David. Ruled a united kingdom, the whole kingdom. And then when David's son Solomon, David's son Solomon also ruled a united kingdom. But when Solomon died, his son Rehoboam could not keep the kingdom together. So the kingdom split into two. Into, over here, into the kingdom of Israel, and their king, their king became Jeroboam. So all this blue place here, all this place here became the kingdom of Israel. And then from the yellow part here, that became the kingdom of Judah. Now, we are saying the kingdom of Israel and then the kingdom of Judah with their king Rehoboam, which is the son of Solomon. But first of all, this area, this yellow place here that became the kingdom of Judah was named after somebody, was named after Judah. And Judah, you might ask, who was Judah? Judah was the fourth born of Jacob. Jacob. Jacob was the ancestor, one of the ancestors of the Israelites is called Jacob. Remember, the ancestors of Israel start from Abraham. They start from Abraham. And Abraham had two children. Okay? Abraham had two children. The first one was Ishmael, who was born through the slave girl, Egyptian girl. But he was not the one who inherited the promise, because Abraham was given a blessing and a promise that should be passed on and on and on and on and on till it gets to the Messiah. So Abraham's two children, one of them became the promised child, and that was not Ishmael, the first born from the slave girl, but the second born, who was born by Sarah, Abraham's wife. Isaac was the one who carried the promise, who carried the blessing. Okay? Now, Isaac also had two children. Okay? And Isaac's wife was Rebecca. Isaac had two children. And his children were Esau and Jacob. Okay? Esau and Jacob. Okay? Jacob being the younger one. And as a matter of fact, they were twins. But Jacob was the one who got the blessing, not the older brother Esau, because Jacob threw the conspiracy with his mother, the power of our mothers, right? Was able to steal the birthright of his brother. Okay? And so he got the blessing from Jacob, from Isaac. Okay? So Jacob got the blessing. So Jacob is going to be the line. Okay? And Jacob, another name for Jacob is Israel. Okay? The name Israel was Jacob's name. Okay? And Jacob's sons, Jacob had 12 sons, 12. And each of his sons represented the ancestor of an Israelite tribe. So the 12 sons constitute the 12 tribes of Israel. So you have the first born, who was Reuben. First born was Reuben. You have Simeon, you have Levi. Remember Levi? Levi, Levi is a priestly family. So he became, his children became the priestly family, the priestly tribe. If you don't belong to that tribe, you cannot become a priest in Israel. So it's a special tribe for the priesthood. And then the fourth born was called Judah. Okay? And the fifth one was Dan. The sixth was Naftali. Seventh was Gad. Eighth was Asher. Then you have Isachar, you have Zebulun, you have... Then after Zebulun, after Zebulun, there was a girl. Jacob had a girl, a child, a woman, a girl who was called Diana, Dinah. Okay? Dinah was Jacob's child. But normally, we don't talk about, they don't talk about women. See how they skip over the women? So after Dinah, there was Joseph. And after Joseph, there was Benjamin, who was the last born. All these names represent a tribe. So you hear the tribe of Dan, the tribe of Zebulun, the tribe of Naftali, the tribe of Simeon, the tribe of Reuben, the tribe of Benjamin, the tribe of Judah. Judah was the fourth born. So his name is called Judah. The word Judah actually means, "I will praise God," or "praise be to God," or praising God. That was the name, Yehua. These words were translated and English words were put in. But that's the word that made its way to become Hallelujah. Hallelujah means praise God. Okay? So Luya, Huia is praise God, Judah. That is the name, that's the meaning of the name. So Judah, the tribe of Judah was the tribe that inherited the promise. So it is that line that the Messiah will come from. That was the line of David. That was the line of Solomon. That was the line of Rehoboam, as you see right here, Rehoboam. So when the kingdom split, it was only Judah and Benjamin that became a tribe here. But it's all called Judah. This whole territory was called Judah. The rest of the 10 tribes formed the kingdom of Israel, the northern kingdom. Okay? So there were two kingdoms after Solomon. And that stayed until, until, I told you, until, until 722 B.C. We'll see that right in a moment. So until the time when this whole area was the kingdom of Israel, there was no Galilee at that time. But this whole area was also split in two because another foreign king came to conquer Israel and took the people here out, took most of the people here out into exile and brought foreigners to settle this place, Samaria. Okay? So when they brought the foreigners to separate this place, then you have the north, the northmost, that still have Israelites. They are still Israelites, and their kingfolks in Judah are Israelites. So they were kingfolks. These people here, the yellow, were the same people here, but now you have foreigners in the middle. So Samaria here became a land that was occupied by foreigners, and they intermarried with some of the Israelites. Okay? So there in Samaria, you have either completely foreign people or you have people who are, the Israelites will consider that a mixture, adulterated Israelites. They are not complete full-blood Israelites. They are intermarried with foreigners. So that is the kind of people you have here that the Israelites consider not their family members. They are not their people. They are not part of the promise. So they consider those in Galilee as their brothers and sisters. They are the same brothers and sisters here. And in the middle, you have foreigners. Okay? So this is how it was at Jesus's time. In Jesus's days, this is what we came to have. So let me go on and let's continue to explain that territory that we have just seen. The territory we have just seen is this, what we are talking about now is Judea. That's this side. Jesus's ministry here is very important. And so by Jesus's time, you have a lot of towns, a lot of cities in Judea. And we will come to find many of them soon. So the territory, this territory we are talking about is the territory given to the descendants of Jacob's or Israel's fourth born, Judah. We know that the kingdom separated after King Solomon and from the kingdom of Israel. So in 722 B.C., Samaria intercultivated by Assyria, and Judah and Galilee was sandwiched. No, I wrote it wrongly. I'm supposed to say Judah and Galilee sandwiched Samaria. So Samaria was sandwiched between Galilee and Judah. Okay? So by 6 B.C.E., that time, this is Jesus's time. The time Jesus lived, Jesus lived within this time, 6 B.C.E. To the year 6 before the common era to the year he died in 33 A.D., 33 C.E., but we span it to 70 C.E. By this period, the Romans had conquered the whole of Palestine and created these provinces. So the Romans created provinces like counties and put their own government officials there. So you have the province of Galilee. I'm going to go back again. So by Jesus's time, the Romans have created provinces in all over Palestine. So they had the province of Galilee, the north, they called it Galilee. They have the province of Samaria. Then they have the province of Judea. Then they have the province of Decapolis, province of Perera, Nabatea, Idumea, Egypt. All these are provinces of the Romans. The Roman emperor ruled all these places, even to the north. If you go to the north, Cyrophoenicia. The Phoenicians, the province of Phoenicia was also a Roman province. Okay? But we are now here. So let us continue. So over here, we have the Roman provinces that were created, included the province of Judea. And in Judea, you have cities that include Bethlehem. Bethlehem fell in Judea. Okay? Then you have Bethany, Bethany, where Lazarus and Martha and Mary lived. Okay? Outside Jerusalem, but Bethany was also a very important city where Jesus ministered. You have Jericho. Jericho is part of Judea. Masada, Masada is a fort that was created by the Romans. Then you have Qumran. Qumran is the caves where some of the Israelites who are ascetic, who are like monks, they separated from the community and lived in caves, Qumran. And then you have Engheddi. You have Arimathea. You remember, the one who provided the tomb for Jesus to be buried in was called Joseph, who comes from Arimathea. Okay? Comes from Arimathea. So Arimathea was one of the cities. Emmaus, Emmaus or Amos. This city is the city where, that is close to Jerusalem, where the two guys who followed Jesus decided to leave their disciples because Jesus was dead. And so they were going back to their town. They were walking, and Jesus appeared to them and broke bread with them. That's Emmaus. Then you have Japha. Japha is called by different names. In the time of St. Paul, Japha was called Joppa. And some other times, it was called Yaffo. But in present day, Joppa or Japha is Tel Aviv. Okay? Tel Aviv is Joppa. Okay? Then you have Ephraim. There's another town called Ephraim. And then there is the biggest town, or biggest city, which came the capital, which was the capital of Judea. You have Jerusalem. Okay? So Jerusalem was the capital. But I'm going, we're going to talk about Jesus's ministry in Judea, but separate Jerusalem, because Jerusalem is treated specially. Jerusalem is treated specially from all the cities of Judea. So every time you hear, he ministered in Galilee, Samaria, Judea. And then they mentioned Jerusalem separately and specially because Jerusalem was the center where the action, where Jesus actually completed his ministry. The epitome of his ministry was carried out in Jerusalem. So Jerusalem is special, although it's part of Judea. So let us now continue to see a few things. I want us to talk about the context. The context we should bear in mind. We should be thinking like those who wrote the stories about the ministry of Jesus. And we have to think like them. What were they thinking about the places where Jesus worked? So that we'll be able to understand what they are trying to put out. So the writers of the stories, this is what they had in mind. And in this process, we'll come to find the meaning of Judea for Jesus's work. So when they were writing these stories, their intention, their mindset is this, that the whole world was messed up. Okay? Was distorted. And Jesus came to restore the whole world. So the whole world was the target. Was the, was the, was the, the whole world was the outcast, was the, the whole world was lost. And Jesus's ministry has a goal of reaching and saving all the world, humanity itself. So from them, their perspective is that the world is outcast. The world is Gentile. The world is lost, and the world needs salvation. Okay? So that is the world. So they treat this, so the world is the least, is the least, least important place or least deserving of any blessing. The world is totally destroyed. And therefore, Jesus's ministry was supposed to reach there. Now, then, when you scale it down, so they keep going and trying to attach holiness or importance to the different places. From the world, you have Israel, other Israelites, Israelites. The Israelites who have lost their way. The Israelites were the ones who were chosen to be the doorway to save the world. But some Israelites are not worthy because they took themselves out. They refused, they rejected, they rejected the promise. So all Israelites who have lost their way or those who have intermarried with other cultures, like the Samaritans, they are the next least considered or deserving people. So Israel is the chosen doorway to the goal. But some Israelites fell away. And those who are falling away, they took themselves out of consideration. So then the next one, so the writers, this is their intention. So the next ones are the Galileans, those in the north. Now, the Galileans are Jewish people, but Galilee is more country, less developed place. And the people living there mostly are illiterate. They are not, they are not literate. They don't, you can't read and write. They are not literate. Okay? So they are mostly farmers and peasants and fishermen. The fishing is their job. Almost all Jesus's disciples, those Jesus called apostles, were mostly illiterate. Peter was a fisherman. Peter was not, could not read and write. Okay? So they were illiterate. They were considered low class. But they were still members of the chosen people, but they are not able to, they are not the elite group. They are not the elite class of the Jewish people. So these are the Jews who lived in the north, and they were looked down upon by the southerners. Okay? And Jesus, but Jesus, this is the most important thing here. Jesus recruited his coworkers largely from the north. They were Galileans. Remember when Peter, when Jesus was arrested, and Peter was asked, "You two, you two, follower of that man?" And he denied and denied. One of the questions was, "You two are Galilean. Your accent even gives you away." So they spoke with accent also. It says, "Your accent gives you away. You are a Galilean." And Jesus was known as a Galilean. Okay? So, but he was a Jew, but a Galilean, from the north, from the low class. Okay? So that explains why Jesus recruited from the north, recruited those from the peasantry for his ministry. And then, so we keep going on, looking at the context. Then according to the, from the perspective of the writers, then you step a little higher, a little higher, then you get the Judeans, the southerners. Okay? Those who live in the territory of that, they are also Jewish. But they are like a middle-class people. They also are not the highest class. They are like middle class, but they are higher than the Galileans. And the Galileans are higher than the Samaritans. And the Samaritans are higher than the rest of the world, the humanity itself. Okay? So you keep scaling, they just keep scaling down. So the Judeans are the Jews who lived in the south. They are higher society than the Galileans. They are higher society than the Galileans. Jesus used Judea mostly as a hideout. When Jesus escapes from Jerusalem, from, when, when the people, sometimes when the people want to catch him, he, he, he leaves the territory if he hears that his life is at danger. He leaves the territory, and you know where he goes? Some town in Judea, okay. So he was always using Judea to, some, one time he went to Judean town and sent his disciples to go into Jerusalem to, 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 to look at the situation and see, see if it is possible for him to go there or not. So he used Judea mostly as a hideout, as a place to go and pray, as a place also. He had certain families, Jesus knew certain families in certain cities in Judea, like the house of Martha and Mary. Lazarus was the brother of Martha and Mary, and Jesus loved to spend time in that home. Sometimes he goes working all over the place, and Martha and Mary's house was the last stop. And where he can sit down and stretch his, his legs and, and get his feet massaged and, and, and all kinds of things like that. So he had a place where a family, but he had no home himself. So he went, he, he had the special places where he, he went to hide out. He also used Judea to go and pray. Sometimes when he goes out, he finds a desert, a quiet place, he goes to the desert of Judea, some city, and go and pray. So that's, that's how Jesus was using Judea, okay, to accomplish his work of salvation. And then, from the mindset of those who are writing, Jerusalem is the highest on the, on the ladder, ladder of importance, okay. Jerusalem is the highest among the Judean city. Jerusalem is where you, you will find the work of Jesus Christ, where the fulfillment is going to take place, where, where elite live, the elite, the Pharisees, the Sadducees, and the scribes. That's where they are, that's, this is, this is their bastion. And so they are the ones who feel entitled, who feel like they are big bosses, who feel like Jesus calls them, they say, they walk around and they choose places of honor in society, and they wear, they flaunt their phylacterys and let people call them rabbi and things like that. This is, this is the place, because Jerusalem is considered the center of the salvation of God. So Jews who lived in this city of Jerusalem were proud of themselves, they were proud people. And they looked down on everybody else, including people who are in Judea, other cities in Judea. They were complacent people, they are mostly complacent. They feel entitled that, that God should do something, that automatically they are saved. And they are the holiest of, holier than anybody else, because they occupy the physical space of the king, the Messiah, okay. So that's, that's, but then, even in Jerusalem itself, there is also the, the place where the temple is. So you get the whole city of Jerusalem itself, there is something more higher than that. The temple, the temple area is also higher than every place else within Jerusalem itself. So the writers have that, that is the highest of the highest, the holy of holies, the epitome of the place of salvation, where the priests lived and worked, okay. So you have this, this ladder of importance in the mindset of the, of the writers, of the stories. So when you are reading, you should be able to see to it where Jesus is working. Where Jesus is working, you should be able to put in context, what does the place signify, okay. So we're going to talk about Judea, a few stories in Judea, okay. So, so the stories that I'm considering right now are, are, the first one is the teaching on riches. Now remember that Jesus is in Judea, so it's, it's in a place that considered itself better than other people. So Jesus was, Jesus was actually trying to change, trying to teach them to not be too proud because they are rich and, and they are privileged and they are the elite, okay. So many times, Jesus's teaching and ministry was meant to save these people from their complacency, from their pride, okay. So many of the teachings are about that, is, is meant to do that. So these teachings on riches, the first one, in Matthew chapter nineteen, verse sixteen through thirty, talks about the rich young man. The rich young man came to Jesus and asked him, what must I do to inherit eternal life? And Jesus says, you know all the laws, you know all the commandments, go do them, you'll be okay. But the Bible says, but because he wants to prove himself, so the, the text right here says, Jesus says, you know the commandments. You shall not kill, you shall not commit adultery, you shall not steal, you shall not bear false witness. Honor your father and your mother, and you shall love your neighbor as yourself. And the young man said to him, all these I have observed, all these are piece of cake, I've done them all, okay. All these are piece of cake, what do I still lack? So Jesus said to him, if you will be perfect, aha, now we are going to a higher. If you want to be perfect, I mean, all that you have done is just a, a piece of cake, but if you want to be perfect, go sell what you possess and give to the poor, and you will have treasure in heaven, and then come, follow me, okay. And the Bible says, when the young man heard this, he went away sorrowful, for he had great possessions. This is someone who is full of himself, and he's, there's no way he's going to part with his, his possession. No way he's going to separate himself from his possession. So he went away sorrowful, okay. So, so Jesus took the opportunity to teach, to teach about riches. And he talks about how hard is it for a rich person to go through the kingdom of heaven? It is easier for a camel to pass through the eye of a needle than a rich, someone who is rich to enter into the kingdom of heaven. The point here is not against riches, the point here is how, how attached are we to our possessions? How attached are we so much that we cannot, we cannot live without them, okay. So, so there's a way of using our riches, we'll have to find out in other gospel readings, that Jesus teaches that we can use, we should use the riches to do good. To, to buy spiritual riches, that is, to become generous people, to become patient people, to become kind people. We should use that to buy, we should use the material riches to buy peace, to create peace, to create justice and things like that, those are spiritual things. So use the physical thing to buy, but if you are not unable to spend the physical thing, spending which means if you are unable to part with your riches, if your riches is who you are, then we are in trouble, then we are in trouble, okay. So, so that's, that's one of the things. But, but the area where Jesus is preaching itself gives us an understanding of that text, okay. What Jesus was saying there, because the area is the area of people who had so much, who have grown very rich, some of them cheated other people and grown very rich, okay. So, so Jesus gave that story. So also, this is where, in Judea, in the town called Bethany, it's not far, it's not far from Jerusalem. I, I remember when we went to Israel, we sat on the bus and they said, we are going to Bethany. I thought we were going to go like a whole day's journey. About twenty minutes, we were, we were in Bethany, where Lazarus and Martha and Mary's home. And we went to see the tomb, the tomb of Lazarus, where Lazarus was raised. We celebrated Mass there, the church there was called the Church of Saint Lazarus, okay. Jesus raised Lazarus from, from, from death over there. And, and that is meant for, Jesus was teaching the, the Judeans that he has power over death. That he has power over death, and so he, he should be accepted by them. Because that's like, to have power over death is like, that should be the last proof. It's like a proof that this is the Messiah, is it? Because only the Messiah can raise, can give people eternal life. So Jesus raised Lazarus from death, from Bethany, okay, which is also in Judea. Then you have, and, and remember that Jesus is going to die in Judea. He is going to die in Judea, so he raised somebody from death before he died himself, because he wanted them to know that, what he was saying, that he would die and rise from the dead, they can believe that, they can believe that. So he, he gave them an example of his power over death. Then you have the teaching on discipleship, discipleship or greatness, who should be great. Now, this, this story is very interesting, because the mother of James and John came to Jesus and said, I want my sons, my sons, to be the, your lieutenants, one city on your right and the other city on your left in the, in heaven. I want my sons to occupy those seats. And Jesus says, no, 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 that is, that is not mine to give, it's God's, God to give that. God is the one who is going to allot that. And when the other disciples heard it, the ten apostles heard it, they were not happy at all. So they decided struggling among themselves about who is the greatest, okay, who is the greatest among them. Not even Peter was, was considered the greatest, they were fighting among themselves, everybody say, oh, I am the. So Jesus taught them and says, you know, in the secular world, the greatest one among them is the boss, is boss. In, in our organization, which is Jesus telling them, in our, our community, the, the community of God, the greatest is not the boss, the greatest one is the servant of all, okay. So Jesus turned that table upside down, okay, and, and he's speaking in a place where people really would like to be bossy, would like to be, you know, the, the big, the fire, the big Pharisees. And so Jesus was telling them, the, the king has to serve. It says, the son of my came to be served, so he says, you, and this follows, follows the teaching of the riches also. He says, you, you, you give out everything and come follow me, and then you will be great in heaven, okay. So that's, that's something that we can go through, we can, we can dig deeply later on. But this is about the teaching of leadership. If you are a leader, you know that you are actually not a boss in the, in, in, in Christianity. If you're a leader, you are not a boss, you are rather a servant. It is this that make the Pope, Pope, that the popular title of the Pope is the servant of the servants of God, okay. Is the one who serves the servants of God. How, how the picture, whether the picture says it is another question, okay. We, we have to ask ourselves deeper how we present that, okay. So let's keep going on, so the ministry of Jesus also included healing. So Jesus healed the blind, the man born blind, and also a group of blind people. And Jesus healed this man called Bartimaeus. We normally read this story during the scrutinies, when we are baptized, we are about to baptize someone in Easter time. But Jesus performed that in, around the Jordan, around the river Jordan. So that's also Judea, the river Jordan is in the area of Judea. I wish I could scroll back to the map, can we do that, the, the second map?
Yeah, I'll get there.
Okay. There's a, okay, so, so if you look at, look at this place here, you see, this is a sea, a dead sea, very salty sea, and then you have the river Jordan right here and connects to the sea of Galilee in the north. So this is the river Jordan, but this is the area that John the Baptist was baptizing, okay, baptized by the river Jordan right here. And if you look at that place, you can see, this area is where Jesus healed Bartimaeus, okay. Bartimaeus was healed around this area, it was near the area called Jericho, Jericho is right there. So this is where we are talking about right here, where Jesus healed the blind man. In that story, at the end of the story, Jesus was struggling with the Pharisees. And the Pharisees were saying that, uh, yes, so that, in that healing story, the man born blind had his eyes opened by Jesus. And the Pharisees were like, no, you, your eyes cannot be, the one who opened your eyes on the Sabbath was a sinner, okay. And, and they considered people who are blind as sinners. So Jesus told them, they said, they said, they, they have eyes, they said, their eyes can see. But Jesus told them, if you were blind, you will have no sin. But if you say, I can see, then your sin remains, which means that the eyes opening is more about becoming a believer in Jesus Christ. If you do not believe in Jesus, you are blind, okay. So the Pharisees, Jesus kind of turned the table to them and said, you are the real blind people, because you do not believe. And therefore, you are the ones who are sinners, not the blind person. So that, that story is also a very important story. But again, Jesus is choosing someone who is outcast, who is considered nobody, and use that person to teach the Pharisees a lesson. Then the other one is Zechiel's. Zechiel's, that story took place in Jericho, in Jericho, also in Judea, okay. And, and you know the story of Zechiel's, right? He was a tax, a chief tax collector, oh, oh, a tax collector, now watch out. He was a chief tax collector, but the reason why the, the Jewish people consider tax collectors, task collecting was a, was a sinful business, was a sinful job, okay. Task collecting was considered a sinful job, why? Because the taxes were paid to the Romans. The Romans colonized the, the Jewish people, and then they put taxes on them to pay taxes to the Roman Emperor. And their own fellow Jewish people who signed up to do that work, they were considered bad. They were considered bad, they are working for the, the Roman Emperor, who was so despised by the Jewish people. They were, they considered the Roman Emperor as an enemy of God, okay, enemy of Yahweh. So, so this is, anybody who works for that Emperor, who collects the money for the Emperor. And then moreover, some of the task collectors, what they were doing was, they, so the Roman Emperor says, the tax is five dollars, so they come and say, the tax is eight dollars, and they pocket the three dollars, so, and then paid. So that's what they do, they, some of them grew very rich doing that. So Zechiel's was one of those, one of those. So Zechiel's was one of those, one of those uh, uh, tax collectors. But they were considered by the Israelites as bad people, every tax collector is a bad person, is evil already. Like we, that's the, the me- mentality. But Jesus, now, the Bible says he was short, so he wanted to see Jesus who was passing by his area, passing by Jericho, but because he was short, he could not see, he could not see Jesus through the crowd, so he climbed a sycamore tree. And when Jesus got there, Jesus made him special. Jesus called him down and took him, and, and went to his home and ate and dined over there. And Zechiel's changed. Zechiel said, all those that I have distorted, I'm going to pay back four times, five times. I'm going to give the money to the poor, I'm going to do. Jesus converted Zechiel's simply by associating with him. Does that ring a bell about how we, uh, how, when we consider somebody, uh, uh, look at somebody and, and categorize the person as outcast, we don't want to have anything to do with her, this person is lazy, is like that. We cannot, we cannot uh bring conversion by that. Some of these people are our own children, okay, our own children. You cannot, if you say, oh, yeah, you're bad, you're bad, yeah, I don't, don't want to have anything to do with you, you lost them. Or you are going to hell, you are devil, you are this, you are that. There's no way, uh, uh, you are going to, to, to uh, have any inroads. Instead, the right attitude is the attitude of Jesus towards those we think, well, even that we think, we think that those people are bad. Uh, uh, or just because their, their way of life does not match, or we do not understand their, their, who they are and their way of life, and we think that they are evil. They are still human beings. So the, the right, with, with this story, the right attitude is rather to open the door for them. That's when we can get the opportunity to hear from them, to talk with them. But if we categorize them right away as a evil, evil, bad, Satan, devil, there is no communication. You are not going to reach them, you, you lost, you're going to lose them forever, okay? So it's a very beautiful story, uh, 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 that Jesus went to the home of someone who the whole place were like, oh, no, no, don't go there, no, not Jesus, no, not Jesus. He went there, he ate there, you know, and through that he was able to. And then the last one, that story is the story where Jesus, Jesus was anointed, okay? Uh, Jesus, you remember the woman who came to Jesus, knelt down and used her tears to wash Jesus's feet and anointed it, uh, and, and wiped it with her hair and anointed it with cos- costly oil, uh, uh. I told you that Jesus had homes that he goes to, to, to relax. Uh, Jesus accepting, accepting people who are, who, who invite him to his home and, uh, 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 to their homes. And he, that's where he's able to relax and get his feet. Washing of feet is a popular thing, uh, so we use it, we use it at a, at our uh Holy Thursday. But it was a tradition, so it's a custom, that when somebody visits you, you wash the person's feet and, and then, and then massage his feet, because in those days, they don't travel in cars and, and and to have a horse, you have to be very wealthy. And Jesus is a Galilean with Galilean uh, uh followers, uh, who had nothing, who had come to Judea, the south. So they, they went to uh, uh, this home, uh, the home, that home there in Bethany was not Lazarus's home. It was the home of Simeon de Lepa, uh, Simeon de Lepa, there's a man called Simeon de Lepa. That was the home that Jesus went to, and when he was in that home, Simeon forgot to wash his feet. So when this woman came to wash Jesus's feet with her tears and her, Jesus called the man, Simeon, I have something to tell you. Uh, two people owed a debt to uh someone, and then the person forgave both debts, because they were not able to pay. Who do you think will be more grateful? And the man said, the one who owed him a lot. And Jesus said, you see, I came to your home, you did not give me water to wash my feet, but she washed my feet with her tears and dried them with her hair. So I want you to know that her many, many, many sins have been forgiven, okay? So the one to whom more is given, gives more. So that's the, the, the woman in, uh, other stories have may, think that that woman is Mary Magdalene. Others don't think that she's Ma- Mary Magdalene. But uh, uh, the story is not about whether it's Mary Magdalene or not. The story is more about the fact that the one who is, who feels more blessed is the one who gives more, okay? The one who feels more blessed is the one, when you are giving, the, when you are giving, your giving reflects what, how much blessings you have received. Which also means that if you are not giving much, even if you are blessed a lot, all that you have is not a blessing. Because, because the giving reflects the, the bl- the worth of the blessing. So we can make whatever we have, we can turn whatever we have into blessing based on how generous we are. Now, I'm not talking about the church, uh, to give to the church, uh, although I'll be happy if you give the church, give the church generously, please, do that, okay? But what I'm talking about is more how you share your blessings, your time with people, the time and talent. Uh, how you share your knowledge with other people. Uh, I've seen a lot of people in this pandemic time, people send, if, somebody finds a book, somebody finds a book, a good book, they try to share with their friends. Somebody finds something, a website that is very helpful, they share with their friends and, and things like that. That is sharing uh, 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 talents. You have people who made it their job in this pandemic to go looking for people, visit other people, uh, call other people, using their time uh to do, to do things like that. You got people who, who volunteered to the church and tried to help uh the church in setting positions, setting leadership, setting ministries, okay? They use their time, and they spend their time uh doing that kind of job, uh, uh. Uh, so, so there are so many ways that we can consider, it's so many things we can consider bless, as blessings. How we use them, how we did them is what Jesus is teaching us here. And so this is Jesus's ministry. Jesus used the whole of Judea, the whole of Judea, the cities in Judea. He used those cities to, uh, as a way of um, uh, uh, teaching uh people who, who, who feel to, to, uh, who feel like more important than other people. More important than other people, uh, people who feel complacent, who, people who feel like uh, uh, they don't have to do anything and that they are automatically saved. These are dangerous uh, 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 way of looking at things. And so, uh, we will, uh, next time, we will be talking about Jesus's last ministry in Jerusalem, okay? In Jerusalem itself, when he entered Jerusalem and his last ministry over there, that led him to his death. So we have two more sessions to do. We'll do Jesus's ministry in Jerusalem, and then we will talk about his Paschal mysteries, suffering, dying, and rising from the dead, okay?
And we're skipping next week, we have to.
So next week, we are not going to meet, because next Thursday, uh, we will be, uh, next Thursday is the, is the day we'll be celebrating uh, uh, the funeral of Karen Miller, so, in Pleasanton. And the funeral will be in Pleasanton, uh, uh, and that is Karen's wishes, Karen's wish. Uh, the, and he, she planned, she was really well prepared. She planned her, uh, uh, the celebration of her life before she passed away, so, uh, uh.
The seats are sold out, so you have to watch it online.
Yes, so I, as I hear, Jim is telling me, the seats are sold out, okay? So, uh, but it will be, it will be live online, so you can, you can participate online. Our parish is very much active in everything. We have, uh, we are, we have joined, uh, uh, Hannah is, 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 is part of the music, those providing music over there. We, we are part, uh, we, we printed all the worship aid from here. Uh, uh, I'm going to be there, many of the staff members are going to be there. And we are going to uh make sure that uh, uh, Karen's uh wishes are, are honored. Then, a lot of people here, uh, who really have benefited a lot from, from uh Karen, uh, would love to, to, to do something, so the parish will give that opportunity. So we will celebrate uh, a memorial mass for Karen here, uh, sometime in June. Uh, but we have a committee that is going to plan and, and we're going to celebrate that with a mass and a reception so that people who worked closely with Karen, people who knew her closely, and people who have been uh, uh, who have benefited from her ministry would like to honor and, and, and celebrate her uh here at Saint Charles. So we'll let you know, stay tuned, we'll come out with the date and the activities that we are going to car- uh, do uh for Karen here. Um, so if you have any questions, uh, we will take that. Uh, any questions about Jesus's ministry in Judea? Uh, when we read the acts of the apo- read Acts of the Apostles, you see Jesus who tells the disciples, when the Holy Spirit comes upon you, you will become my witnesses in Jerusalem, in Judea, in Samaria, and to the ends of the world, okay? Now, the disciples of Jesus are Galileans already, so he didn't mention Galil- Galilee, because they are Galileans. Peter was a Galilean, all of them were Galileans, Jesus was Galilean. So he says, when the Holy Spirit comes upon you, this is the route, this is how you are going to take my word away. It's going to be in Jerusalem, in Judea, in Samaria, and then to the ends of the world. That's what I, I spelled out to you in the context, uh, the whole humanity will become the target, the benefit. Okay.
Asking them to unmute themselves.
So unmute yourselves now and let's say goodbye to each other. God bless all of you and I look forward to seeing you around. Uh, we had, we had a very good news today too, that the mask wear, the CDC has come out and said, uh, those who are fully vaccinated can drop the mask if they want. So that's a beauty, that we are getting there, uh, slowly, uh, okay? Thank you.